Swearing in ceremony to order. We want to especially welcome all you that came to celebrate with individuals around the horseshoe. I certainly am grateful of my family for turning out so much and I've seen many other members of other family members of the school board, so thank you very much for coming. We'll have a change for pictures during the ceremony. And what we will do is we will swear in around the horseshoe except Ms. Dicard and I and we will come last after all of you have been sworn in and we want to appreciate those people that have come to be the one that will officially swear each member in. Is there anything else from the other school board members at this time that we need to take a look at? Okay, we'll follow the agenda now. We'll ask Superintendent Doris Voce to lead us in prayer and we'll have a pledge of allegiance and we'll ask our new board member, Ms. Lamoyne, to lead us in the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the start of the new year and the spirit of renewed enthusiasm and dedication it brings. We pray tonight for each one here who has been chosen by their peers to represent them in pursuing excellence in education for this parish's children. Guide their work over the next four years and help them to always be mindful of the needs of St. Bernard's young people and to continue as they have in the past to put those needs before ego or political alliance. We are grateful for a board that truly wishes to be of service, Father, and we are thankful that their priorities rest with our children. Thank you for blessing our community with these honorable men and women. These things we pray in your name.
Place the flag.
Move it over there.
Doesn't take long.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Make good speech. Superintendent Voce, would you call the role of this special meeting of the school board?
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Ms. Dicard?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Okay, I've asked Superintendent Voce to go around the horseshoe in the swearing in ceremony if she'll do that and whoever's called, if you're Ms. Acevedo first, you'll go to the microphone. It's not necessarily that you make a speech.
Okay. Well, we're very happy to have all of you with us this evening as Dr. Kraft has said and we'd like to proceed with the swearing in ceremony because then we have a few refreshments that we can all share in and socialize with. So first we have with us our school board member, Ms. Darlene Acevedo, being sworn in by Judge Jacques Sanborn. And if anyone is here with Ms. Acevedo, her family, please feel free to come up with her.
Repeat after me. Aye, Darlene Acevedo.
Aye, Darlene Acevedo.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 3. As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 3.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We would also ask everyone if you please turn off your cell phones this evening. We would appreciate it. Thank you. All right, and Mr. Donald Campbell, who is being sworn in by Ms. Lena Torres.
Aye. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard.
Aye. State your name.
Aye. Donald D. Campbell.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the laws and Constitution of the State of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 11.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 11.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Bill Egan being sworn in by Judge Jacques Sanborn. Repeat after me.
Aye, William Bill Egan.
Aye, William Bill Egan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Donald D. Campbell.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the laws and Constitution of the State of Louisiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 11.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 11.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Bill Egan being sworn in by Judge Jacques Sanborn.
Repeat after me. Aye, William Bill Egan.
Aye, William Bill Egan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of Louisiana.
Of the United States.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Bill Egan being sworn in by Judge Jacques Sanborn.
Repeat after me. Aye, William Bill Egan.
Aye, William Bill Egan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
School Board Member, District 2.
Of School Board Member, District 2.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, and next we'll have school board member Clifford England being sworn in by our district attorney, Perry Nikosia. And former school board member.
And judge, yeah. Let's score.
All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Clifford England.
Aye, Clifford England.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
School Board Member, District 2.
Of School Board Member, District 2.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. All right, now we have our newest school board member, Ms. Catherine Lamoyne, being sworn in by attorney Michael Gennard.
I, Catherine Lamoyne.
I, Catherine Lamoyne.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitutions and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
School Board Member, District 2.
Of School Board Member, District 2.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, and next we'll have school board member Clifford England being sworn in by our district attorney, Perry Nikosia. And former school board member.
And judge, yeah. At school.
All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Clifford England.
Aye, Clifford England.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
School Board Member, District 2.
Of School Board Member, District 2.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good job. Do you have paperwork to do?
Yes.
All right, now we have our newest school board member, Ms. Catherine Lamoyne, being sworn in by attorney Michael Gennard.
Raise your hand.
Aye, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr.
Aye, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard School Board Member, District 8.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District Number 8.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
My understanding.
My understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good job. Do you have paperwork to do?
Yes.
All right, now we have our newest school board member, Ms. Catherine Lamoyne, being sworn in by attorney Michael Gennard.
Raise your hand.
Aye, Catherine Lamoyne.
Aye, Catherine Lamoyne.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe?
Come here.
There you go.
State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 5.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good job. Ms. Lena. And from District 10, school board member Ron Nikosia being sworn in by our district attorney, Perry Nikosia. And former school board member.
And judge, yeah. At school.
All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Clifford England.
Aye, Clifford England.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitutions and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 1.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 1.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And now we have from District 9, Dr. Henderson Lewis being sworn in by attorney Larry Asola, Assistant DA as well.
Raise your right hand.
Aye, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr.
Aye, Dr. Henderson Lewis Jr. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitutions and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitutions and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitutions and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 9.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And from District 5, school board member Joe Long being sworn in by Mrs. Lena Torres.
Someone can stand. Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? Who's going to hold the Bible for you, Joe? There you go. State of Louisiana Parish, St. Bernard. Aye, Joseph Long.
Aye, Joseph Long.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of this state.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 10.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ed.
Congratulations.
That's okay.
Wrong one.
Congrats.
Hold on to the.
And from District 4, Board Member Shawn Warner, being sworn in by his daughter, Andrew Jackson graduate, and Attorney Amanda Plesha.
Ready? Hi, Shawn Warner.
Hi, Shawn Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 4.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I'm gonna pull this out this way? Yeah.
Congratulations. And from District 7, our Vice President Diana Dysart, being sworn in by her husband, Appellate Court Judge Danny Dysart. See, all the little ones in there, Lacoste uniforms.
Who's gonna stand in the middle, since Danny will be here, is hold the Bible. Who would you like to do that?
Okay, I was gonna let.
Who you want?
Christopher and Danny.
Kaden and Cory.
Oh, my goodness. Does anybody wanna come on this side?
I will. How cute that is.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, Diana B. Dysart.
Aye, Diana B. Dysart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 7.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And from District 6, our President Dr. Hugh Craft, being sworn in by our District Attorney Perry Nikosia.
Don't let me block y'all now.
All right, Dr. Craft, hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, please. Aye, Dr. Hugh Craft.
Aye, Hugh C. Craft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And the laws and Constitution of this state.
And the laws and Constitution of Lou Center.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
As St. Bernard Parish School Board Member, District 6.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Dr. Craft.
My pleasure. Thank you.
What in it? No. No, Dr. Craft.
Thank you all for being here, we appreciate you coming, and I want you to certainly stay around for the refreshments. We have some good stuff, and we will entertain a motion by the Board to adjourn the swearing-in ceremony. Ms. Acevedo, seconded by Ms. Dysart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Let's call this General Committee meeting, for the first one in 2015. Welcome to 2015, School Board of St. Bernard. So we will ask Superintendent Vochet to lead us in prayer, and then Mr. England, if you will, lead us in the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening for the purpose of work on behalf of this community. Lord, we ask a special blessing for the family of our former School Board Member Herman Bonnet, who is facing a grave illness this evening. Please help them to find comfort in their faith. Also, Father, we ask a special blessing upon the families of Elizabeth Zimmerman, our former superintendent who passed away, and the family of Dr. Ralph Dotreev, who was a prominent member of our community and contributed greatly to our school system, and others in our school system as they deal with recent losses of their loved ones. Now, as we turn to discuss issues that affect our children, help us to be mindful of those youngsters in all that we do. These things we ask in your name.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Vochet, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Acevedo, here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Lamoyne.
Here.
Mrs. Dysart.
Here.
Dr. Craft.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Before we go to the agenda, I asked, Mr. England has asked for personal privilege at this time?
I think Mrs. Vochet took care of that, but it was still.
Okay, you can reiterate.
Right, I just wanna, Herman Bonnet, you know, he's up in Baton Rouge right now, and he's gravely ill. So if everybody just keeps him in his prayers, we'd really appreciate that. Also, in the family of Betty Zimmerman, like you said in the opening prayer, keep her, their family in their prayers, and we thank you.
Yes, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. In addition, also, our condolences and sympathies go out to Charles Cassar's family, for he lost his father.
His father.
He has passed, Mr. Charlie Cassar. And as Mr. England said, Dr. Zimmerman, a longtime teacher, principal, superintendent of the St. Bernard Parish School System. I was, had the privilege of working with her, and also she was my principal at Andrew Jackson High School. And, you know, condolences go out to her family, and she put in many service, hours of service into the St. Bernard Parish School System. And to one of our students we lost this last week, Michael Vicner was one of our students, and our condolences and deepest sympathies go out to Michael Vicner's family also. And if we would take a moment of silence for Mr. Cassar, Dr. Zimmerman, and Michael Vicner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dysart. Is anyone else that has those that should be lifted with upper concerns tonight? All of, all of those people, super people, I remember Mr. Ralph Dotreev, he was a tremendous community activist with the Kiwanis Club. He was known best for the singing dennis, and also his ranch out, out in Pearl River, Pearl River County. He had a lot of great times out there. He was eighty-seven years, and he packed a lot of memories within those eighty, eighty-seven years. And Superintendent Zimmerman, as a principal early on, was a teacher at St. Claude Heights, a coach, and then went to Andrew Jackson as a charter principal of that group, and then on as superintendent. She succeeded Mr. Buford Jones there, and I think she was superintendent for five, five years there. And then she went on as the executive director for the St. Bernard Parish Government for the Police Chair, I believe it was the Police Jury Government at that time. And we fondly remember Mr. Bonnet sitting over there where Ms. Acevedo sits, and made a lot of contributions to this board, and we appreciate all that, all that he has done. And since he had that horrific wreck with the eighteen-wheeler, he's, he's suffered a lot of illnesses there. So we lift God up to, for him as he suffers through this, and we also offer our prayers and condolences to his family. And, and Mr. Cassar, his father's been ill for quite a while, so we want to definitely lift him up in his prayers because they were really, really, really close. So we thank you for attention to these concerns. So we'll move to the agenda. Dr. Lewis will give the, about the item four on legislative shadowing and so forth there.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Item four on the agenda this evening is Legislative Shadowing Week for Food Services. We have Ms. Bloom with us this evening, Ms. Bloom?
I'm coming before you tonight to invite you again to participate in Legislative Shadowing Week in our school cafeterias. If you notice, I have a packet in your folders outlining the purpose of the week, and also, the second page has the cafeteria contact people, numbers, and the breakfast and lunch times at each school. And then the last two pages are the menus for the week at each school. So you can prepare. We would love to have you, it's a nice way for you to participate with students in a different way. And of course, our support staff really appreciates having you all work with them, they love it. The kids like it too. Mr. England can tell you, last year he was serving, and one of the little boys said, "I know you." Because they're not used to seeing him in that way. So it really is a wonderful time for you, for us, for the children, and another side of education, because we are part of the system, you know, to educate our children, but in another way. And my, you know, I always tell my ladies, my saying is, all we have to do is love them and feed them. So it's a wonderful environment. We always have great, you know, wonderful love and hugs in our cafeteria. So I invite you to come, and I hope you can. If you'd like to, you can call my office and tell me or my secretary when you would like to come. You can just show up if you decide, oh, I think I'm gonna go today, that's fine. You don't have to bring anything, except a pair of comfortable shoes on your feet, and we will supply everything for you. Don't worry about it, you need an apron or anything like that, you don't need any of that. And, or you can call the cafeteria manager listed if you like, or the principal, and that'll be fine.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
You're welcome.
Last year was a wonderful experience, look forward to actually participating again this year. Ms. Long?
Well, I like the idea that you include the menus, so we can decide on the best day to go. Depending on what we feel like eating.
That's right, absolutely.
That's great, sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Ms. Dysart?
The way to a man's heart, huh, Ms. Long? Thank you, Ms. Bloom, for the invitation.
You're welcome.
I was able to participate last year also, and it was a pleasure. The children are wonderful, and like you said, they, they're all happy at lunchtime, they're ready to eat, and, you know, get a nice meal. So we look forward to it.
Good.
We really do. And the children, like I said, are just wonderful to see, and they look at you like, I know you from somewhere. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. England?
Yeah, Ms. Bloom, I tell you what, it was a great time.
Oh, good.
No feeding the kids, because they just look at you with those big eyes, and they look, can you give them more? But they say you only give a certain amount, you know?
Yeah, that's right, that's right. We have to follow those regulations.
It was a great time, so encourage anybody who has free time, please attend, because you will enjoy.
We like it when y'all go, 'cause you can break the rules and give them more. Ms. Bloom is very conscious of the portion control.
We'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other board members? Thank you again, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you.
Item five, attorney, it's to Mr. Nikosia.
Thank you, Dr. Hennessy. Number five, request permission to bid for ten new school buses.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Holton.
Yes, the administration is requesting permission to bid for the purchase of ten new school buses. Just to give you a little bit of information on the current fleet, we have three buses that were purchased prior to Hurricane Katrina, and twenty-two buses that were purchased in the year following 2006. Seventeen buses have over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand miles, and twenty-four are approaching a hundred thousand miles. So it is time to start replacing some of these older buses.
Mr. Campbell?
I would move that this time this week grant permission to advertise them for ten new school buses.
Okay, I have a recommendation on the floor from Mr. Campbell, seconded by Dr. Lewis. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Craft?
Yeah, Mr. Holton, some of those buses we got right after Katrina, they weren't all new buses, were they?
I really don't know the answer to that, because I wasn't here, so.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Gonzalez is here, if you have any questions about the fleet itself.
Yeah, the question was, right after Katrina, we didn't buy all new buses, we got some that were used, that were in good condition?
Yes.
Yes, I thought that was the case.
We didn't buy everything new.
And, and just adding to that, just so that everyone will understand, when we lost the entire fleet of buses during Katrina, we were fortunate enough in our negotiations with FEMA to write a project worksheet to totally cover the cost of replacing the entire fleet. And because of some decrease in enrollment, we have not gotten up to, we used to have about seventy buses.
Seventy-seven.
How many?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven prior to. So we still have money left within that project worksheet. So the purchase of these ten buses will be with those remaining monies that we have been very conservatively using over the course of several years to make sure that we can do this particular replacement.
Ms. Dysart?
That was gonna be my question, I was gonna ask about the funding for the buses, and I thought we, we had the FEMA money still available, and so it's not gonna, this, this money will not come out of our general fund at all, correct?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Long?
Ms. Vochet, prior to the Katrina money for buses, at one time, didn't we have like a, a fund?
We have a millage that was passed that had certain dedications to it. Mr. Campbell is shaking his head, 'cause that used to be one of his favorite questions, that we went through every year in our planned replacement prior to Katrina. In that millage dedication, one of those, part of that money was dedicated to the purchase of additional school buses. So we will have, once that FEMA money totally runs out, that replacement plan that's built into and financed by a portion of one of the operational millages.
So we should have enough funds.
To maintain it as we go along throughout the years.
And replace our fleet, okay?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Are we replacing buses, or are we gonna sell off buses? Are we gonna maintain buses that we have currently in the fleet?
We're, we're gonna sell off ninety-seven too, which doesn't run. We've used some parts off of it, but we really can't anymore because it's such an old bus. We have three head start buses that we don't use, and we're gonna auction those off too. So we're gonna auction off four buses, we're gonna keep the remaining buses. Our oldest bus after that will be ninety-eight-five, which is a special ed bus with the lift. And even though it's an old bus, we're still gonna keep it, 'cause it runs, and it's a good backup bus for the lift bus. And then our next oldest one will be a bus that's two thousand one, and then we have a two thousand three. They're the oldest, and they're, they were, the parish used them to evacuate people after the flood, and so that they weren't here for the flood. So we still have those buses. I don't wanna replace anything yet, because our goal is to hire more drivers and have more subs. And we allow the subs to have a bus that we assign to them, so that no matter where they're driving or who they're driving for, they don't have to lose time going to get keys or a bus from another driver. So we wanna have enough buses to be able to do that. And now we're having more breakdowns, because the buses are older. So we wanna have a good fleet that we always don't have to be pressed, like, you know, something, transmission work, we go to a shop for that. Engine work, it goes to a shop for that. New windshield, it goes to a shop for that. So we lose time, downtime for all those buses, when something's gotta get sent out and then picked back up again. So we wanna be in a position where everyone has a bus, if there is a breakdown, there's a good spare to use. And we're back into the mode of the contract that if new buses become available, the drivers that drive on the eastern end of the parish are eligible for a new bus once their mileage exceeds a hundred thousand miles. And right now, all four of those buses have over a hundred thousand miles on them. So just right off the top, you know, if at the time when school starts next year, you know, those same drivers have those routes, I mean, the buses would go with the routes. If you're gonna have that run, and your bus has over a hundred thousand, then you would be eligible for a new bus. So that right there would be four, right off the top.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Being done, please vote the machines.
Motion passes, eleven-two.
Item six, personnel changes, you have the sheet in your folder that shows the changes since we met last.
For the committee meeting, these are the changes that we have since the beginning of the new semester, for informational purposes for you. And I know it's great to have so many young teachers, but we are having a tremendous number of pregnancies and deliveries of new babies.
Be more serious.
Right, go forth and multiply, so. Anyway, so that's for the majority of the teaching corps. The medicals are for pregnancies.
Okay, Mr. Long, you're next.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Craft. Item seven is a resolution for the date, time, and place of our regular board meetings. And this is something we do every year. So we're gonna need a motion to send this to the full board, so it can be read.
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dr. Craft, seconded by Ms. Dysart. Any discussion? Okay, please vote your machines.
Motion passes, eleven-two.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And we have the superintendent's recommendations and what's coming forward.
Just a reminder, at the regular board meeting, we will be electing officers of the board at the first regular meeting, which will be in two weeks, and possibly signature resolutions then will be necessary at that time. And I did wanna note that we had pulled off the agenda the education item on the Second Step Program that, you know, Mr. Warner had requested. Charles Cassar was supposed to be doing that presentation, and with the death of his father, we will bring him back when he comes back. So that'll be on a future meeting, Mr. Warner.
Okay, so anyone have anything to say before we ask for adjournment? We got a motion, you have a second. Seconded by Ms. Dysart, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We stand adjourned, have a great night.